All right, good afternoon everyone. Calling this January, or excuse me, June 2nd, Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Thanks everybody for being here. Please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for this day and thank you for everything that you're going to do for us here tonight and lead God and direct us as we do your business in Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any first responders or military veterans, please remain standing so we can recognize you. Delayed? Okay, that's absolutely fine. All right. Fellow commissioners, have you had time to review the agenda? And if there are no amendments, is there a motion for the agenda tonight?
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion's on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. Item five, public hearing. Any public hearing items? No. All right, item six, public information. Six point one, Arts in Action. Welcome Ms. Tark.
Thank you. Good afternoon Chairman Burton and the fellow commissioners and the staff and the citizens that are here today. Is this on? Okay, I'm not sure. Okay, okay, so we're good, okay. I'm Cynthia Tard, I'm a volunteer with the Pender Sheriff's Charitable Foundation and also appointed to the Pender County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Joining me in this conversation tonight is Eden Mills, a local artist and president of the Pender Arts Council. Will you stand please, Eden? Thank you. And Sabina Beckman Murray, representing members of the Greater Tops of Arts Association. Okay, thank you. Also representing Arts in Action but couldn't be with us are Ellen Elder, owner of Art Exposure Gallery in Hampstead, and Sylvia Betada, PSCF volunteer. Our county contacts for this project have been Sheriff Alan Cutler and Prior County Manager. Volunteers met in early March to begin research and form a framework for the project idea which we named Arts in Action. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about this initiative that combines creativity, community, and the spirit of volunteerism to enrich the lives of those who serve and protect us. Arts in Action is a volunteer-driven effort to bring local artwork and photography into the walls of public spaces of the PLC, P E L, sorry, scheduled to open in 2026. The vision behind Arts in Actions is simply yet powerful, to transform the stark and utilit- I knew I would not be able to pronounce this, the utilitarian walls of the LEC into a space that reflects the beauty, history, and culture of our county. These walls should tell a story, not just to the officers, staff, and community members who walk through them each day, but to everyone who enters this space. By featuring local art and photography, we aim to inspire sense of pride, unity, and humanity in the place that often deals with the most challenging moments of life. We know that from numerous studies that art has the power to uplift people, reduce stress, and foster a sense of connection. For law enforcement officers who face immense pressure in their work, having access to thoughtful and inspiring imagery can make a meaningful difference in their day-to-day lives. For community members visiting the center, art serves as a bridge, a way to humanize the space in creating a welcoming environment. In short, art is not just decoration, it's a tool for wellness, communication, and community building. Arts in Action will rely entirely on the generosity and talent of volunteers. Local artists and photographers will be invited to donate or loan pieces through an application process that represents the essence of Pender, such as a serene photograph of the northeast Cape Fear River, a blueberry farm, or paintings reflecting coastal landscape or patriotic images. This project offers an unparalleled opportunity for collaboration. We envision partnerships with local schools, art organizations, and community groups to ensure the works display diverse talents in Pender County. Additionally, in incarnation with your plans to opening the facility, we would like to engage and talk with you later on about having opening night where we reflect the art that is displayed, meet the artist, and learn more about the partnership. While this is a volunteer-led project, we seek and would appreciate your blessings as we continue with our planning. In closing, Arts in Action is more than just an art project, it's a testament to the power of community. It is a reminder that even in spaces associated with duty and discipline, there is room for beauty and inspiration. Together, we can create an environment that uplifts and unites, showcasing the talents of our residents and honoring the tireless efforts of our law enforcement community. Thank you for your time and consideration, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, any questions Ms. Tark? Thank you Ms.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Item six point two, Ms. Fulton.
All right, there should be a presentation. No presentation, okay, well y'all just got to listen to me talk then. So we're going to talk about the emergency services plan. This presentation is going to be a broad overview of the plan that I sent to the board last week and that I sent to the fire departments as well. Don't want to bore everyone with every single detail. And tonight will be informational only, so the next board meeting, the full plan and presentation will be attached to the agenda packet so the public can review it, so everyone can see it, and y'all have more time prior to voting on it. So a little bit how we got here. There's been a progression from all volunteer staffing to nearly all paid staffing over the past many years, not just in Pender County but across the state and the nation. So this merger with the county, with all the fire services, has been talked about for more than ten years. The fire district tax and the EMS tax no longer cover all of the fire and EMS services in the county, so the board began discussing a merger again in January of this year, and then of course passed the resolution in March directing the county manager's office to produce a plan by June 1st. So again, this plan cannot answer every question, it cannot address every single scenario. We are back on track talking to Pender EMS and Fire, and we do have NC Fire Chief Consulting on board, we had our first meeting with them today. They have had a chance to review the plan and they think it is an excellent start to this process. So this presentation's just going to be a broad overview, like I said, of the plan, and tonight is informational only, just to reiterate that. So tonight I'm going to briefly cover the departments involved, the county structure that will exist after the merger, some key milestones, estimated cost summary, transition plan, risk analysis, and a post-acquisition integration. So the departments involved in this are Pender EMS and Fire, Pender Lee Fire Department, Maple Hill Fire Department, and Rocky Point Fire, as I drop my sunglasses off my head. So Pender EMS and Fire provides EMS services countywide and provides fire services in a number of districts and of course has full-time paid staffing. Pender Lee Fire and Maple Hill Fire are staffed with full-time staff from Pender EMS and Fire, and then Rocky Point Fire staffs their department with part-time staff. So the merger's going to result in the creation of an emergency services department. The structure is recognized throughout North Carolina and it aims to enhance coordination between first responders. So in the plan, there's a broad organizational chart, it does not include every single position. So there's other staff positions that currently exist, especially within Pender EMS and Fire, such as those in administration and logistics. Those may stay in the emergency services department, or they may be allocated to other appropriate county departments like fleet maintenance, IT, HR, et cetera. So those positions will be evaluated individually. positions will be evaluated individually to determine the best location within the county to best utilize the staff skills and experience. So, under that emergency services structure, we'll have an emergency services director and a deputy director, just due to the size of the department, some level of administrative support, whether that's under the emergency services director or whether that's under each division. So, there'll be a fire division chief. There'll be, the fire marshal will become the assistant chief of fire prevention. If I knew I didn't have my presentation, I would've printed this out just a little bit bigger. Assistant chief of operations, and assistant chief of training and special teams. So, then we'll, of course, have our EMS division with quality assurance and quality improvement underneath that, assistant chief of operations and assistant chief of training there. Emergency management will stay the same underneath that structure as well. And then we'll have emergency services communications administrator. That'll be your radios, your satellite communications, and those types of things. I'm over here with the clicker. So, there's a number of milestones in a process this complex. The key date that everyone wants to know is July one, 2026, when operations will move to the county. And there's a number of milestones leading up to that and following that date. So, the first thing that we are gonna wanna do is have a memorandum of understanding with each department. That's not a legally binding document, but that is gonna lay out the responsibilities of everybody, the common goals, and some key dates. We wanna identify the emergency services director because that person needs to be involved in the rest of the steps. We're gonna need to have some staff town hall meetings. There's a lot of uncertainty right now with a lot of staff. They wanna know what's going on, you know, how is this going to affect them. So, we wanna be able to talk to staff, answer their questions, and get some feedback from them. We'll need to inspect buildings for maintenance purposes, and we wanna have a final merger agreement by the end of the year. So, this will be the actual legal document, and that will lay out the dates, the turning over assets, all of those kinds of things. We'll need to finalize operational details, rewrite the EMS system plan, have some public town hall meetings so we can explain to citizens what this means for them. All of that'll be in the spring. There'll be some minor dispatch and CAD updates that need to happen in the nine-one-one center, and then, of course, the transition to the county, July one of 2026. That first payroll would be July tenth of 2026. So, after that key date of July one, we'll still have, all right, I got my presentation up now. I know y'all were just really excited listening to me talk through all of that with nothing to look at. All right, so, like I said, we're on the key milestones here. So, that, after that July one key date, we'll still need to transfer deeds, retitle assets. We'll need to integrate all of the IT, right, the hardware, the security stuff at stations, those types of things. We'll need to rebrand vehicles and stations. And departments are still going to need to close out their financials. They're still gonna need to send W twos, ten ninety-nines. They're still gonna need to file taxes and all of that administrative stuff. So, what everyone wants to know is what is this going to cost? So, you can't put a single number on the cost of the merger. And, of course, anytime Ms. Blue wants to interrupt me during this section on the costs, she is more than welcome to. But I'm gonna go through each one of these sections a little bit. So, personnel is always a large cost with any organization. So, there will be an additional cost, about two point six million, and again, that is an estimate. But that includes primarily an increase due to benefits. About one point eight million of that is due to benefits, mostly the local government retirement system, because we are required to contribute fourteen point something percent. This also includes a three percent COLA that county staff and Pender EMS and Fire staff are also getting. So, debts and liabilities is fifteen point six million. It's important to note that a lot of that comes with assets as well that offset that cost, because a lot of those are leases that finance things. So, we can either pay some or most of that off early, roll it into annual debt. And it's important to remember that we're already paying most of this in our annual budget allocations to departments. Under operational costs, that fourteen and a half, or fourteen thousand five hundred that you see there, that's some timekeeping software. The county was already looking at changing the timekeeping software. It doesn't work great for shift scheduling, so we were already looking at changing that. In the recurring operational costs, we have mowing, internet, software licensing, things of those nature. And it's important to note that four hundred and forty-one thousand isn't necessarily entirely in addition to what is being paid now, right? Because departments are, some of them are paying for some mowing. They're paying some level of internet service. They're paying some level of software licensing. But we didn't have all of the details on that to separate how much of that is an additional cost. So, this is the total cost for those items. There's legal costs involved, retitling the assets, retitling the deeds, and the consulting for NC Fire Chief Consulting. And then there's capital costs. So, a new fleet garage was already identified, an expanded or new fleet garage was already identified in the facility's master plan. So, we have nine million here. That is a higher-end estimate on a similar-sized warehouse. We estimate it on the higher end because there would be additional bay doors, additional bay doors, vehicle lifts, those types of things. But that entire cost is not attributed to emergency services, because that is something that was identified as a need countywide. So, I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail and hopefully not bore everyone to death, so I am gonna try to run through this, and please stop me if you have questions.
You're gonna go back to the element?
Yes, yes.
So, this is twenty-five million dollars in additional overtime costs. I mean, so some of that asset, some of the, um, some of the fund balance, and how do we pay, how do we, how are we making that twenty-five million dollars?
So, the debts and liabilities are already being paid annually in debt service now. The additional personnel, it will take some maneuvering to figure out where that comes from, because that's annually reoccurring cost. And then, the additional, the smaller costs would be appropriations from fund balance, and then the fleet garage is already identified as a capital need for our own CIV purposes. So, there are many different ways we could finance that, whether financing or cash flow.
So, the additional personnel cost, is that new personnel, is that the percentage, is that the difference between what they're getting now? Because those numbers don't match what's in this plan. I mean, the numbers that's in this, in this plan, I'm assuming are based off the current salaries of Pender EMS and Fire.
So, that is the
Salary structure that we get that's in this plan. So, a lot of the salaries are higher, so that cost is gonna be
So, there's a portion of that two point six that is salary adjustments that we have to make to put these personnel on our pay plan. Then there's another portion that is adding, correct me, Sarah, I believe it is six
Nine.
Nine full-time employees for the purposes of filling part-time positions previously. For instance, Rocky Point staffs their station entirely with part-time people for the most part. We would have to hire full-time people to account for that. Most of those part-time people are also employed at other local governments. And then, like Sarah mentioned, the one point eight of it is mostly the increase in the retirement contribution that we have to make.
At the current, the current
At, at projected pay levels.
Yeah, there's a range, and they're
We took each person.
Looking at their, you know, the Pender EMS and Fire that they provided, the pay, their paid people, why they paid people. Some of those are a few thousand dollars less, unlike the county structure that's in that, in this plan. I mean, example, firefighters in their plan is like forty-nine thousand, and ours starts at fifty-two.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's gonna throw, that's gonna change that number, correct?
That's included in that number, yeah.
How can you include the retirement if the salary is, because that's based on the amount of their salary, correct? Fourteen point six, or nine-six percent?
Yes.
So, if they're making forty-nine, you're not paying as much as with their retirement because if you wanna play, if they're making fifty-five, correct?
Right. We calculated it all at the rates, the fifty, fifty-five rate, or whatever rate that we said.
The highest rate?
We calculated everything based on
All employees at the mid, the mid-level?
No, on their individual levels. We gave everybody a grade and a step based on their hire date. We've gone through the entire roster and done that for every single person.
Okay.
And the salary ranges were compared to other counties to make sure that they were in line with other counties, so there are some that were moved up for the projection purposes.
And as the firefighters moved up, and some like the officers actually, in our pay scale to what they're making now, the officers moved the opposite direction.
Right. We had to consider it in conjunction with looking at the sheriff's office and how their structure works, and also with how the EMS folks work. And so, we, we think we've done a pretty good job of that. We have literally a list of every single person and what they were making, and what grade and step they will be making, and then we calculated benefits off of that.
So, I'm gonna ask the next question. So, according to the state, we're forty percent undervalued, and we're going through a reevaluation. So, that'll bring our tax base up to twelve billion dollars. To remain revenue neutral, which I think I do, and I think the majority of the board wants to next year, how do you plan, how do you plan on paying for this? Because that two point six million dollars at revenue neutral is a two point six nine cent tax increase off of revenue neutral. How do we plan, what services are we gonna cut that we already have or reduce to remain revenue neutral in 2026? And I know it's hard to do now, but that, I mean, we have to make that decision now if we're gonna implement this plan. What departments that we currently have are gonna be underfunded or reduced? How do, how do we make that revenue neutral?
That is a good question that we will have to figure out in the next year for sure, or, well, less than a year, because we'll have to figure it out by next year's budget. There are a couple of things that incorporating the full, incorporating EMS and fire tax into the county tax rate will compensate for some of that.
That'll assist my next question.
Sure. It'll compensate for some of that, but not all of it.
So, when we incorporate the fire and rescue tax into the tax, avalorium tax, which tax rate would we use? Because we have different fire taxes all over the county.
It, the math that I have done calculates, it calculates an average fire tax rate and pulls them all in. So, some will go up and some will go down.
There's somebody who'd get a tax increase regardless.
Some will, yes.
The municipalities that currently don't pay fire tax, they'll be paying this tax in their, in their, so the municipality residents that pay avalorium tax will now be paying the fire tax when it becomes all one joint.
That is correct.
So, the ones that already have fire service are gonna be self-studying.
Correct. They're already doing that to the tune of seven point five cents, but, but yes, it'll be one or the other, yes.
Okay. I think I have some more. I hope, I would have hoped we were gonna do some more in-depth tonight, because if we're gonna vote on it next week, there's a lot of questions that, that need to be asked and answered, both for the, the personnel that's gonna have to make the transition and the taxpayers that's gonna have to fund it. And this plan, that's a, that's a plan. It's a very vague plan that just tells us why we need to do it. It doesn't tell us how we're gonna do it. I mean, yes, we know we've got to change the deeds over. Yes, we know we've got to do this, we've got to do that. But how do we do that? And that's not in this.
That's correct. It, it will, this is a plan for how we're gonna get through the next year.
And we're gonna get the plan.
Essentially, yeah, yeah.
All right. I'm done for now.
Sure.
How we consulted with the LGC and other finance agencies to see how that will affect our bond ratings or any other ratings for the county registry status.
Well, it will depend on how we decide to handle that fifteen point six million in debt. Either, if we assume it, it, it could impact it. It doesn't have to necessarily. Again, there are leases that offset a lot of these assets. So, unlike school debt where we take on the debt without the asset, these would be debt and asset offsets that would, it would impact our level of debt, yes, but as far as the impact to our balance sheet, it would not be as harsh as school debt.
So, I'm glad Commissioner Tate brought that up, because I had, I had that same question. When we had our budget retreat with Davenport Associates, you know, they talked about the next three years. Next year, we're gonna be at policy. This will keep us below policy more than a year, which, and especially if we do have to wind up building the courthouse, and Commissioner Springer introduced the thought of a, a school bond, at the last meeting, all that debt does add up. And we're at three hundred and eight million dollars as of May that we have debt on. So, how, how do we keep our bond rating where we get favorable interest rates if we continue to carry, bring on debt all at one time like this, not, not staggered, you know? As, as financial advisors, have they weighed in on this at all, Davenport Associates?
They are aware that this is a conversation. We, we would have to go into more detail with them and have more time with them to answer all of your questions. But yes, they are aware.
Have they given an opinion, financial opinions as our advisors?
They would less give us a financial opinion and more give us financial information based on the amortization schedules. We just have a list of debts right now. We would have to get the individual amortization schedules for all of those and put them into the models and do all of that legwork, which we've not had time to do over the last two months.
So, Pender EMS is revenue generating too, correct, from the bills that they generate, they bill, correct?
Revenue generating in total, they, they're a nonprofit, so they don't operate to generate revenues. They do have billing through EMS insurance, yes.
And so, what does that equate to?
Two point two to two point three million dollars a year.
But the debt service is at fifteen million?
Yes.
Hmm.
Well, no, their total debt is at fifteen million.
Correct. I'm sorry, the total debt.
The debt service is that annually, yes.
So, what does that equate to at our current tax rate? What would that, what percentage would you say? If we had to, an expense that we occur in expense, fifteen million dollars impacted by our current budget would be, equate to what dollar amount on our budget? What percentage should I say?
One penny of our tax rate is roughly one million dollars.
So, we're looking at
Not necessarily. I mean, we have fund balance that you could fund some of it. Some of it you could just pay
You all keep saying fund balance, but I thought fund balance, you know, our old-school commissioner, okay, when I came on the board, it was for emergencies, not for reoccurring calls and not for non-emergency items. I mean, it's not just a savings there that we just keep spending on, like we do our own money, we do. But we, it's for emergencies. I mean, if the schools have borrowers, chillers, all these things go out, that could happen. When I was college president, we had, things like that happened that I wouldn't plan for.
Sure.
And that could impact your budget tremendously.
That's true. That's true. And what I'm referring to is, Davenport has calculated our minimum fund balance policies, and they calculated slightly above that for a comfort level, for instance. And then, we all know we have to keep it higher than that, right? We have to keep it higher than any comfort level that anybody could imagine, because Hurricane Florence alone costs
Yeah.
Nearly twenty-five million dollars just for Pender County. Over the years, fund balance does end up growing for other reasons. Maybe you have underspent, maybe you've overcollected, and so, that's what I'm referring to, is the underspending and overcollecting that you could actually use to fund some of these things, rather than, I'm not talking about dipping into anything that we would need to keep for emergency services
So
Or emergency disasters.
So, if we wanna dip in fund balance for this, then we can dip in it for several million dollars and help the people of Wathah and Willard and Highway four twenty-one get water?
No, no, no. Water is an entirely different operation.
Well, still county residents, we're gonna dump in the film balance, it's still happening with county citizens, but I know that's not the purpose of the presentation tonight. I call back to the tension of
So, these, these debts and liabilities, their current debts and liabilities, the discount for the aerial ladder truck that they have on order or the EMS units that's on, currently on order that's not
The total debt does not. They have budgeted to begin paying that debt service in their annual budget this year going forward, because we've not instructed them to do their budget any differently based on this just yet, because it's not been approved.
So, that debt liabilities could possibly be up to another three and a half million dollars on top of that fifteen point six?
Yes, it could be.
Well, we're talking about the, that annual debt service. That is a hot topic. Who's, who's currently paying for that debt service that they have now?
The annual debt service? Pender EMS and Fire.
And who pays the, Pender EMS and Fire?
The
The citizens of Pender County?
Correct.
To the tune of almost twenty-three million dollars a year, right? Okay, that's all I have.
But I, I just think it's the way it's structured is different. I mean, they have it, they have it structured out longer than what we would have it structured out. We don't usually carry loans and things of that nature, do we? I don't use it
Not for smaller items, we would typically cash flow them, yes. I, I say smaller, it's smaller to us and more to them.
But yes, they're, they're paying it over time where we would be paying it more quicker, which would put a higher dent in the pocketbook.
Well, we can finance them with the same financing that they have if we wanted to. It's just a matter of how well you want to proceed.
Also, and here it, it says the operational cost of minimal increase and fire, minimal increase and operating cost EMS. And I did some research on just the cost of, of turnout gear over the last three years. It's gone from three thousand to over almost six thousand dollars a sit. How can you say minimal and when you're talking about two hundred or a hundred and thirteen firefighters? That's not minimal, that's pretty.
That would be minimal over what we're already going to pay, assuming the departments continue operating as they are. They're still gonna have to get that turnout gear. They're still gonna have to do all of that. So we did not include those costs that would be the same whether or not. You know, we're still gonna have to buy the same amount of turnout gear, whether it's Pender EMS and Fire buying it or whether it's us buying it. So we did not include those costs here because those essentially would be equal.
Any other questions? Resu- uh, resume, Ms. Fulton, thanks.
Uh, so getting into a little bit more detail. Staff coming to the county, of course, would be entered into the local government retirement system. Uh, we have a 401K. Their existing, uh, Pender EMS and Fire's existing 401K will roll into the county one, 401K. We have already confirmed that. Of course, they'll be enrolled in state health plan, other benefits, life insurance, those types of things that we have. Uh, we've looked at the PDO time that they have. We can roll that into vacation and administrative leave and sick leave. Um, for the purposes of that administrative leave can be used for any purpose, much like the PDO is now. So that way it would not just limit them to vacation and sick, um, in the way that the county structures that. Vacation time would be accrued per years of service. So if someone's worked for Pender EMS and Fire, for example, for eleven years. Those eleven years are in service to the citizens of Pender County. So they would be given credit for the year of service for that vacation time accrual that goes up the longer you've been with the county. Be the standard sick and holiday time accruals. Again, they'd be given credit for the years of service for longevity. You know, if you've been with the county for ten years, you get a check once a year on your anniversary date, uh, the same thing would apply. For payroll, I think we've kind of already touched on this, uh, but we use the existing salaries to place on the appropriate grade and then those were compared to other counties throughout North Carolina.
Can I ask you a question about accrual or vacation time?
Sure.
So in the plan, if you've been here like seven point something hours, probably eight or three. Is that for like twenty-four hour shift people and twelve hour shift people too? Is that for an eight hour shift person?
So we talked a lot about the different ways to do that. Um, and I, uh, HR looked at it and they were getting more accruals. With, including holidays because they don't currently get the same holidays that we get. Um, and so their actual accruals were going to be higher, um, even leaving them the same as an eight hour employee. For onboarding, staff are gonna need a lot of, you know, we wanna have some informational sessions prior to the transition. So that staff can understand the benefits available to them, how their time's rolling over and all of those things. We wanna alleviate a lot of the, the uncertainty. And the onboarding for paperwork, there's things that can be done prior to that July one date. There's things that can be done within thirty days. But there are also some things that have to be done within three days of reporting. Um, so there will be, uh, quite a bit of, of, um, working around those schedules to get all of that paperwork done during that time period. For schedules, EMS will stay on the twelve hour shifts, fires stay on the twenty-four hour shifts. Uh, we are working with the Department of Labor, um, and also NC Fire Chief Consulting, which we met with today. Um, on fire payroll, um, but essentially they'll still get paid every two weeks and we are working out whether over time should be paid. Every fourteen days or every twenty-eight days. There's a lot of different ways to do it and we are working on finalizing that. So when it comes to volunteers, volunteers are very important for the fire service, especially those tanker task forces on the west side and especially for those special teams. Um, so we want to ensure that anybody that is volunteering currently with any of our departments still have that opportunity to volunteer. Uh, there will need to be a, a background check, drug testing, those types of things, just so that everything is the same across the board. Uh, and we have not, uh, different departments do different incentives and different recognition things for their volunteers. So we would need to figure out how we want to recognize volunteers for their service. And again, we wanna have some town hall meetings for staff. There will also be some public town hall meetings, but these will be for staff, um, prior to that transition. So we can hear feedback from staff and that we can, uh, answer any questions they may have. So we've covered, uh, most of these finance items about the debts and leases. Uh, any existing contracts, we'll look at, do we continue those contracts or do we have a county contract that makes sense to, uh, continue utilizing? EMS billing is obviously very important. That's a revenue source. Uh, we men- wanna make sure that that is continuing. There are some current grants open that we will have to maintain that grant paperwork. For the most part, most of those grants just involve hanging on to some equipment for a couple of years. Uh, but there is EMS Station Nine. There was a state appropriation for that. That is already flowing through the county, so we are already doing the paperwork for that. We have lists of fixed assets from all the departments and of course, those will be transferred into our system and we will track according to our policies. Uh, we already mentioned the first payroll date would be July tenth, um, and then Ms. Blue already covered the EMS and fire tax. So for facilities and fleet, I already mentioned the new fleet garage that was identified as part of the facilities master plan. Uh, we are looking at property already owned by the county for an appropriate location to put that facility. And again, that estimated cost was based on a warehouse of a similar size on that higher end estimate because of the additional bay doors, because of the, uh, additional lifts and stuff. But they would need that twenty-five foot ceiling, uh, to be able to extend the ladder and work on the truck inside. On the fleet and building maintenance side, uh, Pender EMS and Fire has certified staff to work on their vehicles. That's very important. Contracting those things out, there's huge lead times, um, and it, it puts vehicles out of service for a long time. So those staff are very, uh, very important. We have replacement schedules from each of the departments on their apparatus and on their equipment. And it's gonna be very important to stay up on top of those replacement schedules because a lot of that gear has a very long lead time to get, uh, once you order it. And of course, there's the rebranding for the fleet and the buildings. So there's a lot of technology for seemingly everything nowadays, but definitely for emergency services as well. There's some network hardware that'll need to be installed in stations, the door access, you know, the keypads, you see it a lot of the, the county doors and camera access. Or cameras for security. We're trying to standardize that across the county. Vehicle technology will remain mostly the same. Staff support, there's gonna be an additional two hundred plus staff that IT are having to support, that software licensing, emails, all of those types of things. But there will also be staff transferring during this, uh, merger. There'll be an integration period where, you know, all of the hardware we have, all the software licensing needs to come under one umbrella. So that we have access to the, the CAD and active nine-one-one, those types of things. And of course, we'll want social media and website to all match up. And then the communication support side of things, nine-one-one, there's not a whole lot of updates that have to be done, but there will be some. And of course, there's the radio support. There's a lot of radios involved, but there's also staff that would be transferring over. I promise I'm getting towards the end. So on the training side of things, Pender EMS and Fire does a great job running academies for fire and EMS. Um, we want to continue those as needed. They also do a lot of training for credentialing, for career development. And those things are very important to providing a high level of service. So those are all things that we need to continue. And their staff already in place in their training department able to do those things. Special operations and special teams is another thing that's very important to Pender County. Swiftwater Rescue, search and rescue, drone operations, state medical assistance team. These are things that we often see during hurricanes, during flooding, but they are also very active in times outside of hurricanes. And those are things that are very important in a rural county without a lot of resources. Those teams are typically staffed by some paid staff and some volunteers, which goes back to why those volunteers are so important. So on the fire operations side of things, uh, we've mentioned that we wanna keep staffing and equipment the, the same level as it currently is. Most, uh, or all stations have either, either three or four staff depending on station and depending on the apparatus at the station. So we don't wanna reduce that level of staffing and we don't wanna reduce that equipment, right? If there's a ladder truck at that station, there's a need for it and it needs to stay there. We don't have any intention of changing any response districts unless we identify that there's a reason to, uh, throughout this process with NC Fire Chief Consulting. And for OSFM, the Office of the State Fire Marshal, there's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of checkboxes, there's a lot of inspections, uh, to go through to be able to maintain service. And for ISO ratings. So we did talk to NC Fire Chief Consulting today and I told him that I've heard a lot of different things about what impacts ISO ratings. Um, you know, which impacts people's homeowners insurance. And he said that for the most part, it, mergers don't impact the ISO as much as people think they do. So we are gonna work through all of that. We're working on scheduling a meeting, uh, with NC Fire Chief Consulting and OSFM in the next couple of weeks.
So while we're talking about the fire district, there will not be a fire district exactly, it'll be a general service district, but just what the state called it.
So we have to finalize that, um, but there's a, a bunch of different ways to do it. The towns will still have their districts and they still do, uh, provide service in the county districts and they're gonna have to. We're gonna have to work with them to continue to provide service in their county portion of their district. Um, so it'll depend on exactly how we work the tax, um, stuff and how we work that out with OSFM.
So one of the reasons supposedly we're doing this is so we all, everybody in the county has the same level of service. Is that, and there's this plan, we talked about lots of areas of county that currently are nine, ten S. What, are we saying that we're not going to avoid with that right now pretty much if we're just gonna continue to let those people? Because those people will be paying the same tax as people in the middle of the forest.
So. The staffing levels and the response districts are remaining the same. So for right now, yes, everyone's gonna get the same level of service that they're currently getting. So, um, the last thing that I have on my presentation is that we do need to make a long-term strategic plan for emergency services. For where, what do we want that to look like in the coming years? Because there are places in our, in our county that is, are considered to have no fire coverage because they're so far away from stations. Um, so that is something that we will need to look at for future planning. But there, those people or those, those homes that, you know, are in a nine or a, a ten, that, they're already there. So they're not reducing the level of service that they're getting, but that will require long-term planning.
They're gonna pay the same service that I do.
Yes.
If I get a burger, can I order a Whopper, you order Whopper, do you pay the same thing? I get a bigger burger.
Are they currently paying now?
They are.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of them are paying a different rate.
So on the EMS side, again, we wanna keep the same staffing level. Uh, we wanna continue the, there's quality assurance, quality improvement, peer review that is done on patient charts. We wanna ensure we continue that for patient care. Um, and there's gonna be significant updates that need to be made to the EMS system plan. That also involves inspections and such afterwards. Um, working very closely with OEMS and NC Fire Chief Consulting to work through all of, all of those things. And of course, working closely with Pender EMS and Fire, who currently writes the EMS system plan. So there are a number of risks associated with this merger. Communication is going to be key for mitigating each one of these. So the top concern is always going to be public safety. Um, we don't wanna do anything that reduces the level of service that the public is receiving. We need to make sure the transition is smooth so that, uh, apparatus is responding when dispatched with the appropriate staff, with the appropriate equipment. On the fire side, you know, we have a lot of boxes to check, as I've mentioned, related to ISO, related to OSFM. Um, just in general, staying up to date on the best practices. On the EMS side, we have a lot of boxes to check with OEMS. We have a lot of things that we need to do for that EMS system plan. And of course, we're still doing normal operations. I say we, Pender EMS and Fire and all the departments are still doing normal operations as we're working through this merger process. Um, so there's a lot of things, a lot of moving parts going on during this. Um, and then of course, internal risks, right? Uh, something doesn't go right with payroll, some, somebody's benefits don't get signed up right. Somebody doesn't have the right IT access that they need. There's a lot of bumps in the road to be had on the internal side of this. And again, communication is the only thing that's gonna mitigate any of this. We have to have the right people at the table talking through this entire process. Right, so I tried to. Without communication, the, the plan is not going to, uh, the merger is not going to be effective. It's gonna be very bumpy and there's a lot of risks associated if we do not effectively communicate with everybody that needs to be involved in the process. That would be the chief solution to all of, all of the risks would be communicate, effective communication. Uh, the risks of not dispatching the right units that are currently being dispatched to a fire call, to an EMS call. Um, you know, not having the proper staffing on a truck, not, um, you know, not doing something. Right on the EMS side where we're not allowed to continue to provide service while we figure something out, where we can't. You know, we're not allowed to provide certain medications, something like that. Um, I mean, that is, that's all I have is examples of things that could, that could be risks, um, you know. And on the internal side, people not having, uh, the right IT access could mean that someone can't go in. And, you know, get that, that active nine-one-one notice to respond to a call. So there are risks associated, most of which the, you know, the biggest threat is that somebody doesn't respond to a call that needs to respond. Yes. I didn't think to list it here, but yes, that is a risk.
Because we're gonna do our best to avoid that risk, um, but we, we, there are a lot of decisions that will have to be made in the next year to figure out exactly what that risk is.
But avoiding it, but through this lot of analysis of a strategic plan, you would identify that risk. And I'm wondering why is it not listed, if that's one of our?
Well, that would be an internal risk. Um, that's not something that Pender EMS and Fire, we have to communicate with Pender EMS and Fire. That's something we have to figure out internally.
But wouldn't we as a governing board even know all of the risks associated before we move forward with this plan? Wouldn't it be in our best interest to have all that information?
Yes, we, well, we went over the financial piece of it.
I know, but we didn't have it identified here as a risk, but it's a lot of reasons to be decided.
Well, it is a risk. It would be an internal risk, yes.
I agree with Commissioner George, this is very vague. It's one of the more weaker plans I've seen, but I just don't answer a lot of questions.
So I have one last question and comment and then I'm, I promise I'm gonna be quiet. So through this, out this entire presentation that we've had, we keep hearing that the level of service is gonna stay the same, same. For what you have now, even the people that really, it is considered not having fire protection. If we're keeping the same level of service, what are we changing? What, why are we doing this? Why are we? Because somebody's gonna get a tax increase whether you think you are or not. If you live in, uh, a district that pays at eight now, you're gonna be born at eight. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get a tax increase and, and you can sugarcoat it however you want to it by rolling into the avalorium tax as a whole. The citizens of the municipalities, the town of Burgal, Atkinson, Topsail Beach, Surf City, they're getting a tax increase. Of whatever that rate is that you, the average rate, it's a tax increase. So what are we, what is, what's, what's the plan? Well, I mean, what, why are we doing what we're doing? Can somebody just answer that?
Uh, we were directed to provide a plan for what it would look like to merge all of fire and EMS services. Um, with the intent of creating efficiencies by having one department as opposed to multiple departments.
But what efficiencies have we, have we done? I mean, I don't see anything in this plan where we've saved anything or cut anything or changed anything. Other than the county taking on something that ninety-eight percent of the counties in the state. Do it the way we do it now. I don't, I, I don't really, I don't comprehend. And I try to, uh, trust me, I try to sit down and I try to do my research. And I've reached out across North Carolina and South Carolina, um, of how they do this and there's, I just don't see what we're doing. I mean, if we had an issue, it makes sense. Um. I mean, even Onslow County right now with, with the mess they're going through, they're, they're not even attempting to do anything similar to this. Um, so I just wanna know what, why we're doing what we're doing. If anybody can answer, it, it doesn't have to be you, it can be anybody. Thank you. I just want to know what, why we're doing what we're doing. If anybody can answer, it doesn't have to be you, it can be anybody. Thank you.
So I would, I would say that there, there's a lot of reasons for doing a lot of things, and one of the main reasons that we've been tasked with doing this is in order to provide local government benefits to the employees of Pender EMS and Fire, which we have. Now, i- is it going to cost more? Yes, it is absolutely going to cost more. But what are the benefits of that? Um, I don't think anyone is saying that Pender EMS and Fire or any of the volunteer departments aren't doing a great job of what they're doing now. We were just asked to provide a plan for incorporating it into a county function, and that's what we have started with here. Does it answer every question? No, we don't expect that it can. Plus, we have, we started out having some pretty, some pretty intense conversations about what the expectations are of both the employees of Pender EMS and Fire and of the volunteer departments and of the county staff, because there are county staff that, that this will impact greatly as well. And what we've done is we've put together a starting point for us to move forward to figure out what that looks like for Pender County. Like Sarah said, you know, a merger conversation is, in ideally, it would be part of a bigger EMS strategic plan conversation. This conversation has been had for a number of years. It keeps being put off for a lot of very good reasons as well. We can't answer all of those questions, and at some point, it's either going to cost more and it's going to cost less, or we've, we've got to either do it or not do it. And so this is our point of, this is where what we've identified as a starting point, there are risks, there are a lot of risks. Financial being, in my opinion, the largest, but that's what I do every day, all day, so. I, I think that it's, this is a starting point. Sarah's put a lot of work into this. At, at some points, the, the volunteer departments and EMS and Pender EMS and Fire have worked with us to communicate their concerns as well. And we've tried to address them as best we can. There's been a, a question list back and forth of their concerns, and we tried to explain to them, you know, better or worse, this is how we would answer your questions. And, and it's up to the Board of Pender EMS and Fire, as well as the Board of Commissioners, to decide if that's something that makes sense going forward for Pender County.
So maybe I, I'm not saying I lied, but I, maybe I just didn't, I have one other comment. So the biggest count, one of the biggest counties in the state has a contract EMS. They actually contract their dispatch in Mecklenburg County. And those in contract employees receive state benefits. Has anybody reached out to find out how a contractor for the county is doing that? Because it happens, they, if you can go to the website, Med One, I think is the name of the, the organization. That's one of their recruiting things, is they are enrolled, their employees are enrolled in the North Carolina local government retirement system. So I mean, that, if that's the, if that's the reason we're doing it, we're giving half the people in the county a tax increase, and maybe we can, there's options to that.
Sure, that's something we can absolutely explore.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Fulton, for the presentation. I think you've worked really hard. I think you've uncovered a lot of good things. And moving forward, I think you got a plan laid out that's going to work with the consultants. There's been some good conversations with EMS and Fire, and, and I know with, with me, some of the employees. There's over two hundred employees for that nonprofit company that, just in one example, and I made this the other night to a couple of them, I don't know how a young man and woman in that company can raise their children and live in this county and establish roots in a career if they want to get family medical insurance and pay seventeen hundred and forty dollars a month out of their own check after taxes for their medical insurance. That's just one example. There's morale issues, there's other things going on too, that I think that the taxpayers will get a more effective and efficient means of emergency services by coming under the county leadership, just like the sheriff's office, just like the health department, just like the Department of Social Services. You know, we're, we're spending sixty-eight million dollars on a brand-new law enforcement center. I think there's some risks there too. You know, so that's just all I have.
I don't know if this board want to talk about morale, because of morale issues all over this county. I get calls every day from employees, morale issues.
Every day, every day.
And I agree with Commissioner, or Chair Burton on the insurance thing, but I talked to a person that works for Pender County, and she runs the department. And she has her and her son on her insurance, and if, when she was married, she could not afford to put her husband on the insurance. And she works for the county currently. So if we're going to worry about, we need to worry about all the employees. I mean, we have, we have employees that work for the county right now as county staff that, in my opinion, are poverty level. I mean, I don't see how they make it just thirty-three, thirty-six thousand dollars a year? And how, how do you even ra, how do you raise a family or even think about raising a family with that, that meager salary in today's world?
That's a good point, and we've just worked on the budget, and I think we've brought up a lot of those that were just miserably low. So I think we're working hard every day for every citizen we have and every employee of the county that serves the citizens. The big goal in this is I think the employees of the county should establish roots here and have a career and a life here. Not just to bridge a gap in a job to get some, go hire somewhere else for more money. We need folks to, to, to plant roots and to work here and to be proud to work here and serve our citizens.
So did I hear you say that this merger will not affect ISO ratings to your knowledge?
No, it may, but the, the effects may not be as large as people think they are. With speaking with NC Fire Chief Consulting earlier, we're setting up a meeting to discuss the exact ISO impacts. But he said, for the most part, usually the impacts are not as great as people think that they are.
Uh-huh, may is a word. How will we know if it will?
It'll take working through that process with NC Fire Chief Consulting, with OSFM, and getting exact details of the staffing, the equipment, and all of the things that we have to have in place.
So two critical questions. We don't know if it's going to affect the tax rate, and we don't know if it's going to affect people's insurance rates.
Correct.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's highlighted right here in this report. That, I highlighted it, that statement is made in there. It may. Small, it's important to note that small changes in ISO ratings do not negatively impact response and only minimally affect homeowners' insurance in many cases. If you pay home insurance in Pender County, it's high enough as it is. You don't need any help making it higher.
The two, the two major industries that ISO impacts the most are businesses and industry, not homeowners. Also, with this plan, with more full-time professional firefighters and paramedics, ISO ratings, in essence, after the plan gets going, could come what, down? Is that correct?
I am not an ISO expert, nor a fire expert, so I would
A lot to do with residential ISO is water capability and personnel.
And response time, all of that, correct?
Yeah, and response time, and all that can be achieved to get better and better and better. This is the second fastest-growing county in the state, and one of the top-growing counties in the country. And this, and this time, we quit kicking that can, that twenty-year can down the road. Yeah, well, we all agree it needs to happen. Yeah, but let's do it. Oh, no, wait a minute, let's hold off. No, it's, it's time to, to, to make that change. And I think the citizens, once they understand the benefits of this, will gladly stand behind the men and women with fire and EMS.
I think they already stand by them.
Was that a question?
No, it was a statement.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Fulton.
All right. Status update on the Hampstead Branch Library Project, Scott.
Good afternoon, Chair Burton, members of the board. I'm Alan Phillips Bell, the Director of Pender County Library. Before John Sawyer and Scott Spike come up from Sawyer Sherwood and associate to give the update on the Hampstead Library Project, I just wanted to acknowledge the Topsail Township friends of the library who are here this evening. If y'all could please stand.
Welcome.
They have worked tirelessly for many years, raising funds for the library in general. And for this project in particular, they are donating five hundred thousand dollars to this project. And that is in the context of a total of one point six million dollars of community donations, so they are contributing a great deal to this project, and I greatly appreciate it. So with that, I will hand it over to John Sawyer to provide the update on the project. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Scott Spike is with me. This is Scott. He's a partner in the firm. He's putting a lot of time on this project. And also, Yasha Alan Hugo, who is, who is a landscape architect, working with a consulting firm that we employ to help us do some of this planning. This is a brief overview of, of where we are. We were here a couple of months ago to update you. As we all know, the, the library's planned for property that's adjacent to the government annex in Hampstead. This slide is showing the existing building, the existing annex, as well as the addition to the annex that's used by the Sheriff's Department. The new library is on the left edge of this slide. And you're seeing a little bit of the parking, the, the area that's in green is sort of newly landscaped space around the building. The area in blue at the top of the slide is an existing stormwater management pond. It's really an infiltration basin that is, was well-planned earlier because it's, it is large enough to handle this project. This is a little bit of an enlargement of the same plan. You're seeing new parking, sort of a circular route, a drop-off zone in front of the proposed library. And then, the, this drawing also shows an existing public utility water well system that is already installed on the property, and we have gone to great lengths as we need to, to protect that well. So there's, there is a one hundred-foot buffer zone around that that we are doing very little work in. We cannot put any impervious surface, for example, or any buildings in that zone. Zooming in even a little larger, we're seeing the floor plan of the building. It has not changed since we talked to you last time, except for one small change. We did add a second means of egress out of the large meeting room space in the plan. The entrance is, is as it was, the stack areas are as they were. The building sizes remain the same, and fortunately, the cost has also remained about the same. This is an exterior view, what you would see if you're driving down Highway seventeen going north. A lot of the building is brick veneer. We are doing some changes in brick material to give the building some texture in some areas. Some of the building is metal siding. It does have daylight coming into the building in a good way that gives us daylighting, but doesn't give us heat gain for the, for the stack area and reading areas. This is another view. This would be as if you were arriving at the library. You're, you would be on site, and one of the interesting things that we're doing with the canopy, you're seeing, I guess they're daylit sea turtles on the wall in that elevation view. What's happening there is we're using, we're using a metal perforated metal deck on the, on the canopy. The canopy's intent is not to keep you out of the weather. It's a way to put shade on the windows. There's, those are south-facing windows we're seeing. But it also lets us use the perforations in the metal to cast a more lit surface on the brickwork that will illustrate turtles and the turtle motif, the turtle imagery. And the interesting thing to me is that those are going to change all day long as the sun moves. So it's kind of adds some animation to the building. On the interior, we're seeing some of how the structure works. It's, it's a mass timber structure. It's all wood frame. The mass timber components are the, we're seeing exposed beams, columns. And, you know, mass timber is, is actually, it, it is really safe because it does hold up as well as structural steel in, in a fire zone or in a fire condition. It chars, and it, building code-wise, it's, it, it gives us just as much time. So we're, we're, in this image, we're, we're in the circulation desk, we're, as if we're a member of the staff, we're looking out at the stack area, and we're looking straight through the building to the exterior. This is the outdoor space that's on the other side of the building, away from parking. We've developed outdoor reading areas, outdoor activity areas in that, in that part of the building. The canopy in those spaces is shade-producing, will protect you from weather. This is our schedule. The red bar in the schedule is where we are right now. You see the massive blue bars just beyond the red line. That is permitting. Permitting takes forever. And we, we have been working on it, and it is progressing. One of the biggest challenges is site work permitting. And that's one reason Joshua is here to talk about that. So yeah, I'm going to let Joshua update you.
Good afternoon. So as John mentioned, we're in the heat of permitting now. We've been through a round of review of Pender County TRC, and that gave us good results. Gave us a lot of things to work on and revise in our plans, and so those have been revised. And we're actually running through a wave of different permits. We have to permit with Pender County Utilities, Pluris, NCD EQ after Pluris and Pender County Utilities, as well as NCDOT for the encroachment agreement. Will be boring underneath the, the road for sewer for this facility. But all of those are moving, and we have a big push at the end of the week to submit to all of these entities I just mentioned. And as John mentioned, permitting is permitting. It does take time. But we feel like over the summer, we will have those permits in hand for the project.
In, in this schedule, it, we, we really, we see bidding happening, or the project will be ready to go out for bids, that is, that we will have all permits in hand. We think we'll be ready for, to get out for bid. I believe, Scott, that's in October? Yeah, in, in October, so we, we're going through the summer. We do have more work to do on the construction documents, the bid documents. We're doing that now, but it is really detailed work. Just driving up here, was talking to Scott about, you know, one of, one of the things we're looking at is the ability of the exterior wall that's right along Highway seventeen to shield everyone inside the building from any road noise. So we're designing those walls so that they do a good job acoustically of keeping those sounds out of the building. So details like that, that permitting has nothing to do with, we focus on that at this point. We have, the things that permitting is concerned with, they have all that information, and it is in their hands. So this is our schedule going forward. We are on schedule. We've, we continue to, to push for that, and we know it's important. It is important to everyone that we, we really try to stay on schedule as much as possible. At the end of this, we, we see construction beginning and around the end of this year and finishing around sometime February, early spring of twenty twenty-seven. These are the permit, permitting organizations that are looking at this, doing the reviews. And budget-wise, we, we, our project budget from years ago was fifteen point three million. Our latest estimate, our building cost is at Our latest estimate, our building cost is at twelve point eight. So we feel good about that. We have the funds in the, in the project, not only for, the twelve point eight is construction cost. You have other costs in addition to that, including furnishings, moving the library from one location to the other. But we, we know that we're within budget and we have a cushion. We're really trying to keep it that way. We've completed, you know, we started the project a while back with programming. That has proved to be essential to this whole design. And we've proceeded all the way through schematic design, design development. We're in construction documents and now we're into permitting. And that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, me or Scott or Joshua.
Any questions? Thank you guys.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Who approved the design? I'm new to the board this time, so who, just coming up with speed. Who approved the design of this building?
It's been presented twice before the board looks at it. They, prior to the board seeing it, the library director, his staff, and there's a, there's a project committee that is looking at it also.
The fans of the library or the residents have any input into the design?
Yes. At the beginning of the design process, we did several public input sessions. We had seven public input sessions, as well as a survey and a sort of visual survey that stayed up at the Hampstead Library for several weeks where people could put kind of stickers to indicate the services and features that they felt were most important to them. So we did have a, a public input phase at the beginning.
I know in being in that library in the past, it's always, the meeting room is always a issue. It's always very busy. It's out of space and that was some years ago, so I can only imagine now. And thinking about being proactive and reactive, how long do we think that this current design will be able to be beneficial for the growing part of the county? How, how long do we think it's going to, to take us forward?
The intention is for it to be good for several decades. So, and for the meeting spaces that you referred to, that's something that we already knew was a priority just from working with the public. But in addition to that, in the input, public input phase, that was something we heard a lot about. So we have a larger, much larger multipurpose room, as well as a meeting room that is slightly larger than the one we have now and at the Hampstead branch. And several study or smaller rooms for anywhere from two to six people. So we heard a lot from people who wanted those smaller spaces for tutoring, for example, and other kind of smaller meetings. So.
Let me ask this question. Are we going to have a particular focus with the library? For example, in New Hampshire County, in the library, we have a local history room there. They have a southeastern archeological lecture introduction with the UNCW archives. What is going to be our focus and do we have space building for that? Are we going to do a coastal historical section in this library? What is going to be it?
Dedicated historical section is not something that came up in any of the public input sessions. For me, one of the, the, out of the public input, the, I would say some of the, the three largest things were the additional meeting spaces that I was just mentioning, an expanded children's area, which is included in this plan, and an outdoor area. In fact, the outdoor area was one of the top things that we heard about from the public. And so we have, those have been some of the priorities in the planning process.
What's the volume count we're going to be able to currently house over here in comparison to where we, the current location?
In terms of the number of books?
Any type of volumes?
Well, so the number of, of items will be around fifty thousand, which will actually stay fairly similar to what we have currently. However, we're going to make it more accessible. Another thing that we heard in public input was, especially for some of our older patrons, it's difficult to reach the top shelves and the bottom shelves. A growing trend in libraries to meet that need is to have shelving where the lowest shelf is at least a foot off of the ground and the highest shelf is no more than five feet. So it's easy to reach for most people. The trade off there is that you don't have as many books, but everyone can reach all the books. So that's kind of the trade off. And it is something that is based on public input that we received.
And so what other, we know building a library forty years ago is different than today.
Correct.
The needs are different. The services are different. So have we taken into account for those budgetary expenses? Because we, we're building this nice building. We want to make sure we, we staff it right and we make sure that it has the resources it need. So is there more technology components to this library?
We will have two self checkout kiosks, one near the main circulation desk, and then another one near the children's desk. We are also planning to have a self-service hold pickup area. So that's a very popular service. People can place holds online or call to place a hold. And whereas currently, it's, that is housed, the shelving for that is housed behind the circulation desk and a staff member needs to, you know, help the person get it for them from the staff area. In this new library, they'll be able to pull it from the shelf that's out on the floor and check it out themselves at the self checkout if they like, or they can go to the front desk to check it out from a staff member if they prefer.
I'm just wondering, have you had any conversations with members of the ALA or any of those experts there to just get their opinions on this design to make sure that we are encompassing?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Yes, so.
I want to finish my question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I was absolutely, that was, I was going to speak to what he was mentioning to me. So a part of the project team is a library consulting firm called Rethinking Libraries. They've worked with public lib, dozens of public libraries throughout the country and have been a real asset in the design process. They helped guide the, the public input process and have worked continually throughout the planning stage and will continue to work throughout the project. They have the kind of detailed knowledge from working with lots of different public libraries across the country to, to know the details of the sorts of things that really make a difference and providing, providing better services for the public, making staff areas more efficient. And their, their input has been extremely valuable throughout this process. Oh, no, this is a Rethinking Libraries consulting firm. The American Library Association, I haven't interacted with that organization directly about this. However, there is a very active listserv and membership organization of North Carolina Public Library Directors. And I have put questions out on the listserv on multiple occasions throughout this process to get the wisdom of the kind of collective of library directors throughout the state on different aspects of library design and services.
I was just wondering if it never hurts to have additional eyes to read. And so those are experts at that level. I want to make sure we're not missing anything that we need to include in this building.
Well, that, that is what the, the role of Rethinking Libraries is performing in this process, in this project. They, they have that kind of expertise from working with so many different public libraries. So that, that was the intention in including them, to have that sort of library.
Specifically about the American Library Association.
Well, I, I'm not familiar with the American Library Association providing input on library design projects.
They don't have anyone on their staff that deals with capital improvements to libraries to meet twenty first century improvement and requirements?
That is not something that I have heard of before. Again, throughout this process, I have spoken many times with the State Library of North Carolina and with many other library directors. And I've gotten a lot of valuable input from those sources. No one has ever mentioned direct consulting services from the American Library Association. I'm not aware of that being a service they offer at least.
It's just an opportunity to ask for extra set of reviews. We just built the biggest library in the UNCW history. And we brought a lot of partners in who are a lot smarter than a lot of us to be able to come in and give us expert advice.
Well, I, I would be happy to look into if ALA provides any services along those lines.
All right. That's all I want to know. Can you just look into it?
Sure. Absolutely. Sure thing. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. What is the existing square footage of the library we have now?
The current Hampstead Branch Library is seven thousand eight hundred square feet.
Okay. So what is the, what is going to be the new square footage?
Twenty thousand square feet.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Item six point four, update on Central Pender Park. Mr. Bravo and Mr. Williams.
Chairman Burton and fellow commissioners. So the Central Pender Park update, we've got Bishop Williams. He's our, the VP of Waters Construction, our general contractor for this project.
Good afternoon. Just an update on, on phase one of the project. Had a lot of you guys out for the groundbreaking. We've been moving forward ever since, since that point. Ongoing driveway, RCP, stone base course throughout the site. We've also been installing our six inch fire line, as well as our three inch water supply line coming from the road, going back, back to the concession building. We've also been working on the concession building itself. So that building has been roughed in for the two gang bathrooms, as well as going vertical in, in this picture here. So outside of, outside of that, moving forward from a site work standpoint, schedule wise, we have, have added thirty... Thirty-seven days total, bringing us to September eleventh for a completion date as we sit today. We have had some rain days during the course of it. So that's our, our multi fields. Those are almost wrapped up as far as the initial rough grading. There's four of those in total. As discussed, this was actually showing September fifth. We had a change order here just in between this being sent forward to you guys that sent us to the eleventh. On budget in, in regards to that and currently are carrying a contingency amount for this. So. Any questions?
Any questions?
So did dirt get better?
Dirt did get better. Yes, sir. So dirt got a lot better. I will say we've got one, one small area in the south side of the main parking lot as you enter that has not been, we, we haven't addressed it. So we don't, that's the only area that we don't know what we'll find essentially. So.
Sir, can you, can you tell me about how many people you have working on the job daily? Site guys?
Uh, varies. So as of today, those guys were wrapping up. They had three to four guys on site today. Last week, they had upwards of nine. So it's, it's been a, an influx in, in the actual activity for that, you know, for that day and in that process.
What's, what, I'm looking at this schedule. What, how many float days are you showing on your schedule?
So we're currently, we don't have any, we don't have any float days according to the schedule that's in front of you.
I see that. I, I'm asking you how many float days you built in because I don't know why it would take twenty days for a gravel parking lot. You're sure, you're going to show ninety percent compaction, right?
Correct. Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, okay. So twenty days to do a gravel parking lot. I know there's got to be float days built into that, obviously, right?
There, there's a couple.
So I would ask, I, what I would ask you is get the schedule cleaned up if you wouldn't mind, sir. And send it to the county manager so that she can forward it to us.
Understood. Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
And I, I will say that, that, that schedule did not account or does not show for any of the twenty-seven days we've had rain events occur either.
I understand that. But I, what I'm, what I'm going to say is every time, well, when we was out there at gravel breaking ceremony, as you mentioned, there weren't two people working.
Understood.
So more, more employees reduces the time, as you know. And more time you need is going to cost the taxpayers more money, right?
Understood. Yes, sir.
So I would just ask, you know, going forward, we kind of pick the, pick the pace up.
Understood. Yes, sir.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Williams? Gentlemen, thank you. Mr. White, you can probably hang out here on the next one too. Status update for the Hampstead Kuanos Park.
So tonight we have Matthew Williamson. He's our project manager for Timeless Construction for Hampstead Kuanos Park Phase Four. And I believe our project engineer, Jimmy Fintris, is also here if we have any questions for him.
Welcome, sir.
Afternoon. So first of all, with the time, I'd like to thank everybody and certainly Pender County. Everybody we work with on this project. It's run real well. And been a, been a joy to work with everybody. So paving wise, driveway, parking, the courts are all paved. The fencing is now up around all those courts. And stabilizes all the other areas. The irrigation well is in place and that says the irrigation system. We actually started springing at the fields, so that should be ready, that should be ready for use. Start up next year. Duke will be out there getting the power in for the, which we needed for the irrigation well and for the, for the lighting. We've got to do with it on the actual building for restroom and the, the slab in and the masonry is up. Oh, you can see this. Certainly seeding area. This is actually a stab, it's a little bit more now. Um, that's why it's paved and I think we was in the process of putting the fencing, irrigation wall there. The overhead of Duke came out and worked with us on. They've just got to hook up to the meter on the actual restroom fencing. And so the, so the building's progressing and we just passed the, another plumbing inspection today. So all our inspections are on, on track and all, all passed first time, which has been great and keep the project going. So the, the HVAC was installed Friday and today. The surfacing, they're going to start Wednesday. They actually should have started already, but they had some rain, rain events on, on, on this job, also other jobs that just held them back. But we're still very much ahead of schedule. Lighting's up. We're working with Musco to facilitate them getting their, their bases and poles set and everything while we run power to everything for them. Completion, substantial completion August thirtieth. We've actually pulled that back to middle of July. Our trade partners have been great, all working together, which is really condensed the schedule down. So final completion will also come, come down. I believe there's, and then I believe that's the updated schedule.
So you're looking to complete it before the expected time, correct?
Before, yes.
Great.
Yes, we had anticipated, yeah. Um, August thirtieth and then now we're looking middle of July. Just having so many trades on site at the same time is, and they've really been working well with us. It's been, it's been. uh, they've really been working well with us, it's been uh, it's been, it's been great.
Can you please send us an updated schedule, sir, to the county manager?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
I, I got a couple, and it may be for Zach or Jimmy, I don't know, or maybe to you. There's not a fence around the basketball court?
That is correct, we have a pending change order that we're planning to bring to the commissioners at, I believe at the next meeting, uh, to address that.
If not, who's getting those basketballs out of that six foot ditch?
Yes, it is closer than expected.
Yeah. And what's the plan for the erosion on the, on that north corner, northeast corner of the tennis court? Uh, that doesn't look very stable, I mean, it looks better now since they did some work to it this we-, this weekend, but every time it rains, all that fills into that ditch.
Uh, so that is a part of elite construction and grading, that's part of their contract. I know they were on site Friday when we were there, addressing some of those concerns, we have not closed out, as Meg would have the number, but we are holding a substantial amount of money from them, until they do correct those, uh, based on Jimmy, our engineers', um, recommendations.
So they're the ones with the walking trail too?
Correct, so they did the walking, yes sir, yep, and, and like I said, we are withholding money from them, um, and we are actively seeking a remedy for those.
And, and the uh, the shrubs and trees that's rapidly dying, who is responsible for that?
So, uh, we, we are, the county is, so, uh, we, we water them, we try to water them at least twice, three times a week. Uh, the weather has been not favorable for construction, but it is favorable for landscaping now. Uh, we went through a period when they were installed where I don't think it rained for a month and a half, and that really put a strain on us, but um, we are, we are doing what we can.
Gotcha. Mr. White, um, a, a little while back, Commissioner George asked a question about current playground with some equipment that was messed up there, have you addressed that?
Uh, yes sir, so I have been meeting with vendors about that replacement, uh, just kind of, uh, to get refreshed pricing on that, and so uh, once we are able to get closer to close out on timeless, um, we, I will certainly bring all that back to the board for consideration.
Any other questions?
How tall are those Musco pole, I'm sorry Jim, Commissioner Tate, how tall are those Musco poles?
I believe those are ninety feet, so they're taller than the original ones. And they're, I believe about twenty feet in the ground too, so.
No, I just wanna say, um, I went with Mr. White on a tour of his facility as well, and I can tell, uh, how he engaged with the contractors and others on site that you out there regularly, and I think that makes a difference, and probably one of the differences, we don't see a whole lot of change orders besides the maintenance, uh, which you mentioned, and also that it's been on plan and scheduled.
Yep. Yes, sir, I try to be out there at least twice a week, sometimes more, it just depends, so.
We need more of you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Alright, so, thank you gentlemen, Mr. White, you hang out? Mr. Van and Mr. White, update on the Abbey Nature Park project.
One more presentation, so this is just a quick quarterly update on where we're at on Abbey Nature Preserve as well, too. Alright, uh, so just a little bit, uh, construction, uh, what, what's been completed since, uh, our last update in March. Um, so our water quality permit's been approved, we're at one hundred percent construction drawings now. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we accepted the deed and the maintenance agreement from Mungo Homes. Uh, the irrigation and water meter bases have been installed, uh, at the entrance to the park. Since then, we've had volunteer groups come out and do landscaping, which is gonna reduce our overall construction costs, which is, uh, great. And we have installed a temporary fence, uh, to kinda control pedestrian traffic as well as vehicular traffic. So this is the current, or this is the future parking lot of, uh, the property that the county owns. So in this area, this will become the active construction site in the future. Like I said, the, uh, the engineers applied for the store, uh, the sewer permit from NCDQ, um, uh, county staff, uh, during the tran-, uh, transition of Dario, uh, switching jobs, we've been finalizing the bid documents, uh, and we'll be working with, uh, uh, Ms. Blue and Mr. Van to, to get all that, uh, released. Uh, we are still using the temporary, uh, access point, uh, through our lease with Mungo Homes, that's at the rear of the property. That way we maintain public access to the preserve throughout this process. Just a little bit of the schedule, and of course, this is, this has changed a little bit, uh, since, uh, we submitted this. Uh, but we are, uh, construction documents have been completed, we're in the pro-, the pre-bid process now, so like I said, we'll be working with the county manager's office and finance on, uh, releasing the bid document. Our, um, agreement would be, ideally we'd execute it, uh, shortly thereafter, the lineup with a board meeting, so we're saying August of, uh, twenty twenty-five. Hopefully we'd begin construction later, uh, this fall, and then be fully open on the new site, early spring of twenty-six. Uh, here's a little bit of the budget, uh, just to recap, uh, we do have, uh, money set aside in a capital project fund for this project. Uh, and this is the, um, probable opinion of cost, this is not, we'll have these hard numbers once we actually come back, uh, from bidding, and, um, so with that, I can take any questions on Abbey Nature Preserve if there are any.
Any questions, Mr. White? Okay, thank you, sir. Right, here we are, we're at a public comment now, Mr. Thurman, how many signups do we have?
I have the signups.
Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk?
Um, just one sign up, uh, Charlie Schumaker.
Okay, speakers will be acknowledged by the board, chairperson in order which, the names appear on the sheet, and speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin with comments stating your name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks, and shall refrain from personal attacks and use profanity in the discussion of personnel or other matters as deemed confidential by law. Mr. Schumaker, welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate your helping us out here. Uh, I'd like to speak tonight just on an invitation. We're having a big meeting coming up on the tenth of June, that's next Tuesday, at Penderly Volunteer Fire Department. Dr. Tate will be in attendance, and we'd love to have one more county commissioner who would like to come. The meeting will start at six o'clock and run until, and just be taking questions from District Four, Union Rescue. Anything and everything, water, sanitation, planning, so we have had some input with some other folks who will be out there from the county, the state, and local government, so if we could encourage you folks to come and be a part of it, we'd love to have you show up and, uh, bring it on. It's sort of a meet and greet, and we wanna continue these throughout the whole county, and the next one, we'll decide a little later where and what time, so that we can go completely around the whole county, east, west, north, south, and central, and hold these for input, so that we can learn, and other folks can, you know, possibly get some ideas also. So with Dr. Tate being there, that'll leave four of you, and we have to look out for the quorum rules, so if you'd like to draw straws and see who would like to come and join him, next Tuesday night, six o'clock, Penderly Volunteer Fire Department, we'd love to have you, and we'd love to have the press also come out and be there to see what's going on, and we encourage any of the citizens. It's not just for District Four, if you have something that you'd like to bring up, and you live far east or far south, please come and visit with us, we'd love to have you. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, Dr. Tate.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker.
Thank you.
Alright, that was, uh, it for that, so items eight point one through eight point eight is the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion or discussion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion on the table to approve the consent agenda, and a second, those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Alright. Alright. Approvals and resolutions portion, section nine point one, strategic plan update and adoption of the mission statement and core values. Ms. Fulton, welcome back.
Good evening again, I promise this presentation is much shorter than the other one. So tonight, we're providing an update on the strategic planning process, providing feedback from the public engagement period, and we're gonna talk about how that feedback shaped the mission statement, the values, and the strategic goals that we have tonight. So so far, we've identified mandates, we've conducted a SWOT analysis, um, we drafted a mission statement and values, we identified some strategic issues and goals, and we went out for a public engagement period, and from that, we prioritized the strategic issues and goals, and we revised that mission statement and those values. So right now, we're looking for approval of the mission statement and values, and some acknowledgement of the priorities that, uh, we put in order based on the public feedback. And then from that, we will form work groups for each one of those goals, and we'll formulate strategies and objectives for each one of those, we'll develop the implementation process, we'll write the plan, we'll go back out for another public engagement period, and then seek final approval. So our public engagement period was open from April fourth to May fourth, we originally had seven goals identified, those were enhancing public safety, supporting schools and education, focusing on internal development and retention, enhancing public communication and transparency, improving access to services, increasing economic development, and strategic growth and infrastructure. Uh, the vast majority of the feedback on those goals, uh, were school overcrowding, that was one of the top concerns, and also just funding for schools in general. More, uh, comments, there were more comments about needing to feel safe in the community, some people felt like we need more law enforcement presence, some people expressed concerns with flooding, or just general disaster preparedness. And of course, there's dissatisfaction with development, especially on the east side, but throughout the county. People feel like the, the growth has not been strategic, people are tired of seeing dollar stores and storage units, um, as I'm sure you guys are not surprised, and people are, um, upset at the lack of amenities, a lack of healthcare services, and those types of things. And that feedback for the dissatisfaction with development was shared with planning staff, and that was in line with the, the comp plan feedback that was also received. So in terms of the mission statement and values, the original values presented were community, strategic growth, stewardship, transparency, professionalism, and excellence. The vast majority of the feedback that we see, received, related to the mission statement and values, was the statements themselves were fine, but they were not representative of Pender County currently. A lot of people also disliked the phrase "sound financial management," that was in the original mission statement. People felt like it sounded, uh, like we were limiting services, or it sounded like we were a bank, and other people just felt like we had too many values. So from this feedback, we reduced the number of goals from seven to five, so we can just focus on those top five. So we moved improving access to services and increasing economic development, um, kind of incorporated that into the strategic growth goal, and that'll be part of the comp plan. We revised the mission statement, which I'll get to here in a second, and we reduced the values from six to five, we removed strategic growth, um, as a value, it's already a goal, and it doesn't really fit as a core value. So the strategic goals, in order of importance from the public, are supporting schools and education, enhancing public safety, strategic growth and infrastructure planning, enhancing public communication, and internal development and retention. Uh, so work groups will be set up to identify objectives, benchmarks, and key performance indicators for these goals, so we can track the progress over the next five years. Those work groups will include different departments, different agencies, uh, based on the goal, based on the individual goal. And then once the plan is drafted, we'll have another public engagement period. Um, it seems like people really like the, the way that the comp plan has come back out now that there's the draft, those public engagement. Meetings have been going well, so we want to do another public engagement period, so we can get feedback on those individual benchmarks and objectives that we have for each one of our goals. So based on the public feedback, the updated mission statement is Pender County is committed to, ooh, cannot, I've done too much talking tonight, I'm sorry. Pender County is committed to delivering exceptional public service through the responsible stewardship of resources, in order to build a safe, healthy, and vibrant community where anyone can thrive. And our values, like I said, we cut these down to five, so they are community, stewardship, transparency, professionalism, and excellence. I can read those definitions for the benefit of the public if you would like, or I have already read them in public, so that is up to the board whether or not you want me to read each one of those definitions. No, I think y'all have heard me talk enough tonight. Yes. And this is attached to the agenda item as well. So tonight, uh, we are seeking adoption of the mission statement and values, these, uh, these set the foundation for the benchmarks and objectives as we go throughout setting, uh, finishing up this plan. And it also sets, sets the groundwork for projects throughout the county, and we'd also love any feedback that you have, uh, on the goals as we start setting up those work groups and, and working on those objectives.
Questions or discussion? Thank you for putting this together.
So you went back and got additional feedback, I thought, I'm sure you got comments at initial time, who was included in that initial feedback, and how did you gather those persons?
Uh, for the public engagement feedback, so we had a survey, and then we held two in-person meetings. Uh, we had six hundred and one people provide feedback, on the survey was distributed on our website, it was distributed on Facebook, we printed out flyers, put those in the library, gave them to a few community groups to post throughout the county, um, and then we had those two, uh, community meetings in both Hampstead and Burgaw, and then when we have the future, uh, public engagement period, I would like to have many more in-person sessions, so we can have more throughout the county.
And so we got six hundred and one of those residents, all residents?
I believe so, we did not have, um, all of the demographic questions on our survey, um, just because we were trying to keep the survey as short as possible, but in hindsight, we could have asked that question. We held the public, uh, input sessions, those were advertised on WECT, on WWAY, uh, in the newspaper. Um, so those were, the in-person sessions were available as well, and we had the surveys, um, on paper, and we also talked to the citizens that came out. No, I mean, we gave the press release to the news stations, and they announced it, I believe, a few times.
But we don't have any way to gauge if, if we had any participation from Western Pender, or from Akenson, or Curry, or Willard, or-
Correct, we did not ask where people lived, correct. That's correct, we did not ask where people lived. Right, and when we go back out for public engagement, I would like to be much more thorough in that public engagement period.
Any other questions? Alright, I'll entertain a motion. And this is just to adopt the mission statement, this is not the full plan, right?
Correct, that's mission statement and values only.
Motion's on the table, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed, one? Alright, nine point two. Adoption of a budget amendment and purchase order, computer infrastructure replacement, art technology, Mr. Miranda.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Marcel Miranda, Pender County ITS Director, uh, here presenting to you, uh, the request for a budget amendment and purchase order, uh, for our compute infrastructure. I know we've talked about this several times at length, uh, in several sessions, but I'll give you guys another brief overview here. Uh, so, our current compute infrastructure, which, to be as non-technical as possible, is the architecture that everything that we provide to the county runs on, all of our software runs on it. We do have a few cloud services, but most of them are self-hosted. Uh, so, this hardware currently is leased and not owned, um, the hardware engineers have confirmed that the viable life of this equipment is good for another year at most. Uh, a majority of our existing hardware is now about seven years old, uh, typically, useful life of an IT capital asset is about five to seven years. Current hardware is incapable of running the latest software releases from the manufacturer, so we're currently a few versions back. Doesn't prevent anything from happening, just, uh, just to put that out there. Uh, cut over to disaster recovery environment is lengthy, uh, currently, and very labor-intensive with about a- with about a six-hour estimated recovery time. So if we were to have a natural disaster here, and we had to cut over to our disaster recovery environment, it would take about six hours currently. The current stack will require hardware and software licensing and support, which costs about $180,000 annually, to be purchased in early fiscal year '25, '26, if we do not move forward with my proposed solution here today. Current disaster recovery solution is a hot site, as I mentioned earlier, which means that it's an exact clone of our production environment, and it's always active all the time. This obviously comes with a lot of costs, like floor space, rental fees, you know, maintaining the internet services there that we pay 24 by 7. So that totals to about $179,946 annually, and that includes the hardware leasing. So the proposed solution, we've worked very hard with with ARC Technology Consulting, we've also gone out for several other quotes, ARC was the lowest, but they helped its architect a brand-new solution, which I feel is fantastic. It's less expensive over the next five years, obviously front-loaded with the cost of the hardware, but we will own this hardware, we will not be leasing it. Meg will tell you, we're not a fan of leasing. The new hardware costs will include three years of licensing, support, and maintenance, so that means that we will not owe anything after the initial after the initial investment, until year four, at which point our estimated cost of that will be about $188,000. That is high, I I anticipate it'll be closer to $175 per year. The new solution is completely right-sized for our environment, with a much more cost-effective and geodiverse cloud disaster recovery environment, so instead of having a hot site that we're paying a lease for, and all these associated services, that's all cloud-based now. So the new solution is also much easier to manage, does not require any kind of external professional services like our current solution does today, and is very easy for our current staff to maintain. And the total cost over three years, $670,923. So here is a chart just comparing our total annual costs for the current solution leased versus the proposed buy. As you see, there's significant cost savings. I do have Mike Shook from ARC Technology Consulting here, if you guys have any additional questions for him, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Oh, sorry, the last piece, funding for this would need to come from the general fund, this is unbudgeted currently.
Any questions, Mr. Miranda? Only question I have, sir, is with this coming on board, to encapsulate everything, the newly created emergency services and employees, will that be able to be taken care of also?
Yes, sir, we did actually consider that, when we received the documents from Penner, from Penner EMS and Fire. We did actually consider it and upsize it just a small amount in order to in order to accommodate that overhead, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Miranda, what is what's the life expectancy of this?
As I mentioned, typical is five to seven years, so around year five, we would look at, you know, replacing that hardware again.
Okay.
All right, well, the?
I would like to have the other issues resolved before we've got here to vote on this today, you know what I'm speaking of.
So what is the wishes of the board? Motion to approve is on the table?
One second, Mr., if if I can, is this? The the approval of this, is this gonna is this gonna put any of our members or employees in jeopardy for security reasons?
If we do not approve this today, no, there's no risk of that. What this just means is essentially that we'll have to pay for, you know, for an additional year of support if we don't take action now, which will be, you know, $180,000.
Okay.
To support the current infrastructure.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Graves.
Okay, motion on the table and second, all those in favor, 65% and I, raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? One. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Nine point three. Might as well do nine, three, and nine, four, Madam Fire Marshal. Ms. Burton, welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you, Chairman Burton and Commissioners. Tonight, I'm requesting approval for two separate fireworks displays. The first one on the table is the Town of Surf City's annual July the 4th celebration. It'll actually be on July the 3rd, happening there at Soundside Park in Surf City. This display will be done by Zambelli Pyrotechnics. They have been in our county for the past 10-plus years doing these pyrotechnics here. Fire Marshal's office will be on-site, as well as Surf City's Fire Marshal's office on-site the night of, and don't see any issues with their operators or with us or this event, so I'm just requesting approval for that one.
Just a quick question, since that pyrotechnics display is inside the municipal city limits of Surf City, why do we need to?
General statutes of the state of North Carolina require county commissioners to give approval for all pyrotechnics displays within a county, even if it is in a municipal district.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? All those. Make a motion to approve, nine point three. Motion's on the table?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, 65% and I, raise your hand. Aye. All right.
Thank you, and the same goes for the second one, is Union Volunteer Rescue Squad's Pyrotechnics Display, which will be on June 28th, there at Union Volunteer Rescue. This will also be done by Zambelli Pyrotechnics. I will be in attendance at this one as well. I have no issues with the operator, or with the location, or any of that. I think all the appropriate plans have been made for this to be a safe event for the public. Should weather change or anything arise, we will make our decisions accordingly. So I'm just seeking approval for request for this as well.
Motion to approve the Union Volunteer?
One second, I just want to make a comment about this. I've had a couple of phone calls about this one, and just to get it out there, no taxpayer dollars are funding Union Rescue's Pyrotechnics Plan. This is all private money that they've gotten through donations or whatever, just put that out there. No taxpayer dollars have been used, from what I understand. So now, entertain your motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, all those in favor, 65% and I, raise your hand. Aye. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sirs.
All right. Mr. Cologne, do we need to open up the districts? Water and Sewer District?
Yes, sir, I would like to open all the districts.
Okay.
Give you an update on the billing situation that we discussed on our last meeting.
Thank you, sir.
So my name is Anthony Cologne, I'm the Executive Director of Pender County Utilities. In our last meeting, we brought to your attention the professional mail services closed closed session, they closed their doors on May the 9th, and it left us all hanging about 166 customers. So that put us in a quick reactionary mode, on trying to figure out how we were going to address the upcoming billing, with the assistance of IT, and also the feedback from our customer services representatives. We went ahead and utilized our resources from Tyler Munis to put sort of a billing that we have right in front of you right now, and we are moving forward with pushing those bills out, so that people can go ahead and make their payments and continue doing this. Going forward, I want to let Mr. Brian Terry to explain you the process that we have going through to get these bills in place.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. My name is Brian Terry, Water and Sewer Superintendent with Pender County Utilities. So tonight, last meeting, we we talked about what situation we were under, and we talked about how we were not doing cutoffs or late payments, and what the status of the utility bills were. So I believe Mr. Tate, Dr. Tate, asked what the capabilities of Munis was at the last meeting. And working with the IT Director, he was able to find the default utility bill that is provided to you tonight. That's what I actually gave a copy of you, to show the difference between the old bill and what the default bill looks like. So on the top copy was the old bills that professional mail services utilized. Looking at the default, it actually provides a cleaner look, and it also gives a consumption history for each one of the customers, so they can go back a full year and see what their consumption history looks like over a year period. Now, this is just a default. So working with IT, Marcel back here, we actually were able to export the bills from Tyler Munis today, as a matter of fact, Ms. Jackie worked on it, our customer service manager, and she uploaded them to the tax office's third-party printing company. So the bills are actually going to go out sometime tomorrow, if not Wednesday, so that way residents can go ahead and start paying their bill and stuff. But what this also provides as well, too, is customers, when they log into the customer self-service portal to pay their bill online, they can actually click on the view bill details, and it will show this template up there for this month. Now, moving forward, there is some customization that we're looking at doing with this particular form, where we're actually incorporating the office hours and the telephone number and stuff for our customers, and then we're also incorporating a little different changes on the back as well of the bill. So that's where we stand right now, that's what we're looking forward to doing, and I think in the long run, next month, this will be a whole lot smoother process for us as well, too. So I do encourage customers right now, they should be able to see their utility bill online right now, if they haven't signed up, I encourage that. Anybody that already has an existing account online and self-service, they can go on-site right now and see the bill and pay it online today. And I'll entertain any questions.
Great work for y'all jumping in on this, and trying to get this thing squared away. Good work.
Also, an additional, an additional feature we're working on is being able to send out these bills, now that we're working with Tyler Munis, be able to send these bills via email as well. But that's right now in an experimental base, and we're we're just kind of scratching the surface on that. We want to see how many customers will be interested in that or not.
Outstanding. Any other questions, Mr. Cologne, or Mr. Terry?
Can we ask, are we? I thought we were sitting at the Water and Sewer District right now.
So we send, you know, we send them?
No, I'm saying, I thought we, as the board, was at the Water and Sewer District Board right now.
Yes, you are.
So why aren't we not gavel gaveling?
There's nothing to approve, this is just an information, he was supposed to?
We're in the, we sit in that authority. We're going in that capacity.
Yeah. So?
I'm sorry, I'm just used to one thing.
Right, right. He opened all the districts, we gave you the information, he can close the district, now we're done. We're done giving you the information, there's nothing to approve.
Mr. Turner, do I need to go back and do that, or?
Sorry, I forgot to press the button, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Are y'all asking for a vote?
Nope.
So, I mean, it?
This is for information only.
And again, but there's, it's been presented, and the board, they are not asking for action from the board, but yes, we should gavel in as the Water and Sewer District on doing that, and I apologize, I should have said something, it's my fault, Mr. Chairman.
Well, to be perfectly transparent, this is the first time that you've asked for it to be open since I've been chair or I've been on this board.
And and it was not listed as an item, so that was the the other reason.
That's the way I took it, as an update.
Yeah, we just took the, you know, we took this opportunity, as things are moving so quickly concerning the situation, this was the only place that I can put it in without having to put an agenda in disrupting the process of the agenda. We're good? Thank you so much, you have a good evening.
So that leaves us seventeen point one, State of the County's Health Report. Do I need to gavel that in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we'll open that up. We'll open that up, and now are the Health Department Board. Ms. Moser, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. I think this has been on the agenda a few times and had to be tabled, and so I'm finally here to present the State of the County Health Report for 2024. Before I get started, this is just an ancillary document that I believe Commissioner Grove has probably received a while back when it first came out, and I know Commissioner Tate's familiar with this. So if you have not received one, here's your opportunity before they expire. Just to fill you in, first of all, the community health assessment that you have passed around is a requirement for all health departments in the state to be conducted every four years. And so you can see that it was completed in 2022, and then in between that time, each year, we're to complete State of the County Health Report and present it to our Board of Health. Essentially, what happened in 2022 is this is at least a nine-month process to pull this document together, is to identify what we saw, and I say that, it was a very large committee, as well as surveys out in the community, and the top priorities that came out of that were heart health, substance use, and access to care. Within the document, there are certain items that have to be included, so things like your demographics, a lot of this doesn't change, because typically, the data is about two years behind when you're wanting to start filling out a State of the County Health Report. So some of this information is very similar to the 2023 State of the County Health Report. As you can see, and I've just highlighted a few of those things, our population, which I just looked, and the newest estimated data for 2024 is that our population is 70,077 people. And then, when you look at our age breakdown, you're talking about 5.4% of children are under five years of age, 22.2% are, I need my glasses on. 18 years of age, under 18. And then, of course, your percent of individuals over the age of 65 is 18.6% annually, we're going to see that increase, is tens of thousands more individuals turn 65 every day. Then, of course, you see your breakdown of the estimated population in 2040, some of this detail is really small, and then the breakdown of mainly our Hispanic group has increased. I can remember when I started working at the Health Department, the percent of Hispanics within our population was around 3%. We are now up to 8.3%, 13% African-American, and 82.6% white. Then, a fairly even split as far as our female male population, average life expectancy from birth is 77.2 years. The latest population data as far as living in poverty or below poverty, 10 and a half percent of individuals in Pender County live below poverty, and 13.9% of those individuals under 18 live in poverty. I've also noted what the median? I've also, uh, noted what the median family income is and the per capita family income. All of this information came from the U.S. Census Bureau. Other items that we're to look at are, um, our leading causes of death in the county. And this truly hasn't changed, uh, in many years. Cancer remains our leading cause of death. Um, heart disease is second and stroke is third. What we have seen change is, um, suicide has, um, come up on the scale. And Alzheimer's had been, uh, ranked a little bit lower. And now it's also, um, higher on this scale of the top ten causes of death.
Ms. Moser, do you have the numbers for the number-one cause of death from eighteen to thirty-five years old, which is opioid overdose? Do you have any of those?
I do not have it in this presentation.
I think it surpasses kidney, suicide, diabetes, and all that.
That is figured in there, but it comes under, uh, poisonings, now that you've mentioned that. And, um, it is lower than that. It didn't make the top ten for Pender County, according to-
Somebody's cooking those books then because-
Well, that's the North Carolina, uh, State Center for Health Statistics.
Lot of folks dying of overdose.
And I can only tell you what I have as far as, um, data that comes out. Um, within that document, you can see we do fairly well with our maternity and child health. Our teen birth rate is lower than the state, uh-
What was the type of cancer this identified as the type of cancer?
Lung, lung cancer. And, um, another one is kidney cancer. And, um, breast cancer is up there, but, um, lung cancer is our primary cancer.
Is, is breast cancer on the decline?
I want to say yes, but some, if you go year to year, sometimes it is a little higher than other years. Um, it is disappointing when I see that as a cause of death, um, from death certificates that come into the health department because we know what a preventable, uh, disease that can be. And, and, um, you know, we do have the breast and cervical control program at the health department. So, we are able to see, um, females, well, really females and males, um, that are below poverty, that we can get them into mammograms and also treatment, uh, using state dollars.
So my reason we're asking is because we're doing more, you know, you hear a lot about breast cancer prevention and outreach. And I was wondering with some of the other cancers, is that possibly a reason that is not, just not us? Uh, but statewide, there may not be enough outreach on lung cancer or the early signs of kidney cancer and so forth? I don't know why they look for-
Well, it's, it's funny you say that because, um, a few years ago, regionally, um, the eight counties in the southeast came together to do, uh, a large outreach on diabetes because it was a leading cause of death. And it still is, um, it's unfortunate, but we do have a high rate of, um, people that die with diabetes. In fact, um, those who die with heart disease, a lot of them also have diabetes. But, um, we did a regional campaign for diabetes awareness. And I can't say that that brought our rate down. But when we had a strategic focus on that, I was amazed at how, um, how much it had dropped in our county alone. But there's only so much you can do and so many dollars you can put into it. And we have to recognize that it's not just a health department issue. Uh, we have to rely on everybody in the community to help us to work on this.
So your, so your dates on this are twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-one. So that, that encompassed some of all that COVID lockdown stuff?
Yes.
So that-
Yes.
-kept people from getting the appropriate screenings they needed for those cancers.
That is very true.
That's why that's on the uptick now.
That is a good-
Because people were scared to get their screens during COVID.
They weren't coming out, that's for sure. They were staying away. But, um, even then to point out, you know, that is the latest, uh, data that we have. I anticipate that when we complete our twenty-twenty-six, um, community health assessment, we'll have some good fresh data by then, uh, on a lot of, um, these items. And in fact, um, if you look at the difference that cancer, uh, the rate of cancer compared to the state rate, and, um, that's the closest that I've seen us come to being, um, more in line with the state. And so it's not for a lack of trying for a lot of our health educators, um, to be out there doing a lot of chronic disease management and, uh, outreach. Anyway, going back to our women and children's health, um, our teen birth rate is lower than the state's birth rate. Um, only four percent of women smoked during pregnancy. And that is a wonderful thing to say, uh, to see because we're talking about not just the life of the mom, but the life of the infant as well. And, um, that continues to come down for us as well as across the state. Then, um, we stress how important it is to, um, try to get in for prenatal care in the first trimester. And, um, we had more people, about two-thirds of our women, were getting in to prenatal care in twenty twenty-four. Um, and that's so important. What I see though is that, um, when we have migrants that come in to, uh, work our farms and our blueberries and strawberries and, and all the other agricultural activities, you know, a lot of them travel a route from Florida to Michigan. So, a lot of these, um, patients come and, um, they're pregnant. And so they'll come to the health department for prenatal care. And most of them have not sought prenatal care, um, in that first trimester. So, um, we really try to make sure that we're able to catch as many people as we can, um, that are pregnant and stress the importance of first trimester. We had two percent of our births in the county for twenty twenty-four, um, did not have prenatal care. And that, um, that's a little bit higher than it has been in the past. The whole goal of the state of the county health report is we're to focus on the three leading priorities that were identified from the twenty-twenty-two community health assessment. And then, this is solely what the health department does. Um, while we do a lot of collaboration across the county, um, it's like I said, it's not just us that needs to be out and working to spread the word about heart health and access to care and, um, substance use prevention. But, um, staff promoted the Year of the Trail with, um, tourism, um, we've done heart healthy walks, um, the Wear Red Day. And we get all of county employees to encourage them to wear red on that first Friday in February. Um, a lot of community events and social media outreach. And then we've worked really close with Pender County Recs and Parks to have activities at the different county parks, as well as promoting a National Nutrition Month to focus on heart healthy di- diets. I'm not listing everything we've done, but this is just the report that goes into the state that highlights some of our activities. Um, substance use prevention, we're talking about, uh, promoting the quit line for cigarette smoking. Um, we have the ongoing opioid substance use prevention, uh, committee. And then we share information about the nine-eight-eight suicide crisis lifeline. And, um, we do have standing orders for naloxone kits. Staff's been trained to administer naloxone. And we participate in all of the, um, county-wide drug take-back events that occur, uh, twice a year. Then, of course, you may have seen some of our billboards, um, preventing opioid overdose, the suicide prevention line, um, crisis, um, outreach. Um, we also offer reproductive life planning education classes at DSS. These are, um, families that are at risk of, or may have lost custody of their infants because the infant was born, um, addicted to some type of, uh, substance. And so we educate them on what happens when you have a baby that, um, is delivered, that it is addicted, and the abstinence syndrome that those babies have to go through before they are, are clean. And then, um, we encourage them that if they are going to consider continuing use of some kind of substance use, not to get pregnant. Um, it is a terrible thing to happen with the baby to be born of neonatal s- s- abstinence syndrome. And then, of course, um, we receive naloxone kits from the state. We share them with, um, law enforcement and the Pender County Schools. And, um, our health educators teach catch my breath at, in the after-school programs to work against smoking and vaping. And finally, access to care, um, I had mentioned the breast and cervical cancer screenings for uninsured, low-income women and men, really. Um, the Pender Alliance that has a community resource fair. We just had one with, um, Strong Pender or Pender Strong, um, to share all of the information about programs that the health department offers. Um, we've worked with Alliance Club on all kinds of free health screenings and then back-to-school immunization clinics and, uh, flu clinics. Finally, as part of the requirement with this report is that we're supposed to identify any new initiatives. And, um, last year's new initiative, um, was especially the DARE program being started with the sheriff's office. The post overdose response team through coastal horizons. The schools have done, uh, family outreach and education. Um, of course, the Health and Human Services facility that's projected to be complete in August of twenty twenty-six. And then the health department has to, um, have their own strategic plan that is part of our reaccreditation status. And we are working on a new strategic plan as we speak to, um, relook at our mission and vision and what our objectives are gonna be for the next five years. And any emerging issues, um, I've had a lot of, um, educational opportunities. And, um, our aging population is a real issue for not just our county, but the country. And when you have an aging population, you're talking about a lot of them face chronic diseases. Um, they have high rates of cancer and heart disease, stroke, obesity, injuries. Our, um, health educators teach fall prevention for elderly, um, because that is a leading cause of death in our el- elderly. Um, we do chronic disease self-management, uh, classes. We also do diabetes, um, management classes for our diabetics. And, um, then you're also looking at Alzheimer's increasing. There's a lot of issues about isolation for those that live alone, um, that are elderly. And then a lot of times, um, our older adults have, um, a real food insecurity. A lot of times they have to choose between medications and, and food. And so, um, North Carolina is the fourteenth highest rate for food insecurity in older adults. And then, um, Commissioner Springer was at one of our advisory board of health meetings when we had a presentation on avian flu. Um, this has increased. Um, right now, we're seeing a lull, but it has to do with migratory patterns mostly of your, um, wild birds. And they can infect our poultry farms, but also those who have, um, outdoor flocks of their own. Um, how important it is that they keep a real tight, close look at their, um, their own chickens to make sure that, uh, they don't develop that virus. What we're concerned about is there's no human-to-human spread right now. But as viruses mutate, um, there's always the potential in the years to come that avian flu could transmit into, uh, human-to-human, um, disease. And so, next up is our, uh, community health assessment for twenty twenty-six. Our, um, reaccreditation is in twenty twenty-six and supposed to move into our new building in twenty twenty-six. So, um, we have a lot, uh, getting ready to happen. But I'll be glad to answer any of your questions. I'm always available. You can come to the office and talk to me about any of these. Um, and I'll be glad to share information.
Any questions for Ms. Moser? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the board of health.
Motion.
Motion? Is there a second? And there's a second? All those favorites, six, five, send aye, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Do we need to open the social services board?
No.
Okay. And that leads us to item nineteen. Mr. Attorney, we have anything for closed session?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Um, item three, attorney-client, um, item, uh, sorry, got the list here. Uh, item four, economic development. Item five, potential acquisition of real property. And item six, personnel.
Okay. Ms. Blue?
I don't have anything else.
All right, Mr. Van? Madam Clerk? Commissioner Grove?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, let's see. I got a call dear Memorial Day about the dead tree over at the annex in Burgau. I want to thank Mr. Allen Van for taking care of that. It didn't take long to take care of it.
Yes, sir. And in turn, I'd like to thank Mr. Wyatt Richardson and his staff for addressing it quickly. So, you're very welcome.
I'd like to get an update on the motorcycle track on Carl Meeks Road if we have anything.
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, the, uh, owner has, uh, has filed an appeal to the Board of Adjustment, uh, and that will be heard in July. Um, and, uh, Mr. Adams and myself spoke with the attorney for the prop- for the landowner on Friday. Um, and, but we did not reach a resolution, I think it's fair to say.
So I guess the question for the- So I guess the question for the plaintiffs are why they're appealing, we can't stop them?
Well, our ordinance provides that if there's an appeal to the Board of Adjustment, it stays all other enforcement action until that's resolved. And again, it's nothing to do with this particular situation. That's the standard provision of our ordinance, is if there's an appeal pending, it stays other enforcement action. I will say, unless if it was an emergency situation, for instance, we've had circumstances where there was like raw sewage that we have, but it has to be so designated and this would not qualify under those standards.
I think, just to comment on Commissioner Groves, I think that particular situation out there, those surrounding citizens need some help. They are, some of them at their wits' end, and I can understand that. So if we need to revisit looking at the noise ordinance to tweak that or to carve something out or whatever, to have that discussion, I think moving forward in the future, those folks need some relief.
And to be clear, this is under zoning. This is not a noise ordinance violation. It is the question of whether they're operating a commercial business.
I'm ready to talk about noise ordinance too, if that could come out. I mean, I'm ready about that. This is, this has just gone on so long.
Ms. County Manager, can we get that put on next two weeks' agenda, please?
Sure.
Just for discussion, see what our options would be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Just one more thing. We get a lot of calls about development. I want the public to understand, and most of them do, these big developments were approved back in oh-five. Had nothing to do with, with me. But the public needs to understand that these developments were approved years ago. And that's just the way it is. That's all I got.
All right, sir. Commissioner George? Vice Chair Springer?
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Tate?
Um, I do want to work with Mr. Cologne and his team to address the water issues in northwestern Pender, namely WAPA, namely the good folks from Howard, Fort Wayne, Warren, Ms. Highsmith, Mr. Highsmith, that comes faithfully to every meeting. Who I just feel like get overlooked for so long, not by Mr. Cologne and his team, but by others beyond their level. And also, I see you. You come to every meeting and you're not in your way, okay? And then I also want to also talk about issues over in Atkinson. Atkinson stands to grow. There's a lot of opportunity in Atkinson, and we need to help them get the resources they need in order to go. We know water is that mechanism to get the help we need. Name, lastly, or two items lastly, I want us to revisit the road outreach appropriations to pre-start up to eleven, five, and ten. Last, I want to talk about tire dumpsters. I represent an agrarian side of the part of the county, very agrarian. And I want us to hear from farmers all the time, not only farmers, other people, who have nowhere to dump their tires. And if we don't address that, I was at the trash transfer station on Saturday morning, and if we don't address that issue, I'm afraid it might become an issue for the county that's less environmentally sound. So I'd like for us to have a trash dumpster next week out to Willard Transfer Station.
Thank you, sir. The only thing I had this past, was it last Saturday? I had a chance to attend the ceremony for Memorial Day put on by the VFW in Hempstead at the Annex. And I just want to thank everybody that came out to that. That was a solemn occasion, and as always, Memorial Day. There was, I think there was close to two hundred people at the Annex. It was just about full. I know Mr. Miranda was there helping with the AV equipment, and it turned out to be a great event honoring those who've fallen for our country. So I was happy to attend that. And that's all I have. And I'll entertain a motion for the closed session. Motion and second? All those in favor of closed session, six of five saying aye.
We do appointments to boards? Is that the next meeting?
Yes, so I have appointments at the next meeting. I've put in the advertisements when they should be heard, so that people have more of an idea. Next meeting I have on the agenda to hear the Pender Housing Initiative Board, the, give me one moment, it'll come to me, the Veterans Commission, and then the Beautification Committee as well.
Let's make sure these committees are meeting because we go out and we recruit people to them, and they don't receive any correspondence. Like the committees I've been appointed to, I've received no correspondence three months later, but I attended even the meetings. So we need to be notified. If we're going to ask people to serve, my time is valued and the citizens are. We don't want to just have a name meeting. Here, we want to go to meetings, get this.
Some of the boards have.
Some of the boards have not met yet, and that's the reason that they haven't. Like the Pender Housing Initiative Board, for instance, that board, with the exception of the appointment of the Commissioner, there were no warm bodies on that board, so to speak. That was a completely vacated board essentially, minus the Commissioners that were appointed. So that's the reason that one specifically hasn't been meeting yet, and we're hoping that getting the applications where we've been receiving, we'll be able to fully, fully stock that board and get the meetings up and running.
I understand that, but it would be great that while they're not meeting, that the directors of the various entities have orientation with the board members who are coming on to orientate them prior to the board meeting.
I understand, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, there's a motion and a second on the table to go into closed session. All those in favor, six of five saying aye. Raise your hand.
If we discuss anything that's not closed session, it's the people's business, I'm going to definitely leave you because we need whatever can be tested with this body, we need to do it in here in front of the people.
So we're in closed session. Thank you.